Good evening and welcome to our forum for the Independent City Council First and Second Districts in the February 6th Independent City Council Primary Election. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, and Clay Counties. I am Anitra Steele and I am a member of the League. The League of Women Voter is a trusted grassroots, nonpartisan organization whose members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we neither endorse nor oppose candidates or political parties, we are directly involved in sharing the important issues. Our mission is to empower voters and defend our democracy. We envision a democracy where every citizen has the knowledge, the right, and the confidence to participate. Our membership is open to everyone. I'd like you to know the other League members volunteering with me. Elizabeth Dar is our timekeeper and she's the person behind the numbers, the timing numbers. And our Zoom host, our Zoom is monitored by Terry Lane. I lead the forum's administrative team. The public has sent the questions in to the League's website, LWVKC.org. Our moderator tonight is past League President Sandy Eads, and I now will turn you over to him. Welcome Sandy, welcome candidates.
Thanks, Anitra. And again, thanks you guys for showing up. It's always fun to do this. So I'm delighted to join you for the Independent City Council Forum. I too am a member of the League as Anitra said. You know, I say this every day to everybody I can talk to. Your vote matters. So we're going to hear from you guys tonight. The forums last about 90 minutes and it depends on how we get through the questions and the size of the group. And if I have some follow-up questions, I'll do that. But I'll ask each candidate the same question, selected from those that are submitted by the public. The order of responses has been determined by a random rotation. So somebody's first or last depending, it changes. Each candidate will be given 90 seconds to respond to each question. And if there's a follow-up question, I have 30 seconds to answer that. And at the end, we'll have a two-minute closing statement. We've invited everybody running for the office. You guys are the ones that responded positively and we're thankful for that. So we'd like to welcome you tonight. We've got Mr. Tony Summer, Ms. Colleen Huff, and Matt Medley.
Thank you.
So it has been recorded. It's on the League's webpage at LWVKC.org. So the rules are very simple. Just answer the question, stick to the topic, no rebuttals. You can go back to an issue during your two-minute closing remarks. And I might ask a follow-up question. So we're going to start with Matt Medley. Let me get to my questions here. And so the first one is going to be the same for everyone. Just introduce yourself and tell us what motivated you to run for city council.
Hello, good evening. I'm running because I love my community. I had the opportunity to be raised by two extraordinary men, Hank Funderberg of The Lion's King and Bill Medley. He was the chairman of the board for the Chamber of Commerce. Many, many years ago, they've both passed away since then. But they inspired me and raised me to value my community, to make my community better. I chose to live in Independence, start a business, invest, and improve my community. I've been on the Independent Square Association Board, the Truman Heartland Board, the Downtown Redevelopment Advisory Board. And then I was also the 2023 Chairman of the Board for the Chamber of Commerce. And also, I am currently the treasurer of the Independence Police Foundation. So all of those boards and organizations have prepared me for the next step to make my community better. And so that's where just meeting and networking with community leaders and seeing what I can do to take the next step to truly be a leader in my community to inspire other like-minded individuals to make change in our community. So that's all.
Thank you very much. Tony Summer.
All right, my name's Tony Summer. I've lived in Independence my whole life. I grew up in the Blackburn area, kind of 291 and 23rd Street. Went to Truman High School. Then after that, I went to Washington-St. Louis where I majored in physics and minor in math. I came back home, got my master's degree in computer science from UMKC, and I've worked as a software engineer ever since. Why I'm running is because Independence is home to me unlike any other city can be. I've been all over the world and I've lived, well, maybe not lived, but I've stayed in many cities for quite a long time. Been to, I spent three months in Beijing. I spent six weeks in Europe. I spent two weeks in Mexico. And while I enjoyed all those places, none of them were really home like Independence is. And so I know that I'm going to live here the rest of my life. And I want this city to be the best city that it can be. And while all the people on the city council right now, I firmly believe they want what's best for their community and they're all smart, kind, caring people. I kind of feel that they don't always give an A-plus effort. That sometimes we just give a B or a B-plus effort. So if we want an A-plus city, we really need a city council that gives that A-plus effort every single day. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Colleen Huff.
Hi, my name's Colleen Huff. And the reason why I'm running for city council is I really believe that the city needs a strong leader that can make decisions to protect our city and to clean it up. And I've had, first of all, my degree is in child and family development. I graduated from UCM with honors. I went on to start my own company in 2011. I've been working with at-risk families for two decades to just make lasting positive outcomes to their lives. And I also started a nonprofit in 2019 where I work with homeless families. And what we do, these families are connected with a family court system. So we provide an adequate place for them to have meaningful supervised visits with their children. So in 2022, I ran for mayor. I came very close to beating a two-term incumbent. And I believe that city council is the next best step for me to, you know, just learn that process. And I just want to put all of my expertise in working with families and bettering their lives towards independence because I've lived here for almost 20 years. I raised two sons successfully there. And so that's why I'm running.
Thanks very much. Well, I should have cut you off because you're next, as the random order turns out. So Colleen, as a city council member, which individuals or groups would you rely on to provide advice to you regarding things like zoning changes, code enforcement, priorities for city funds? This would be like neighborhood groups, HOAs, developers, business community, or someone else?
Yeah, so actually, I am already working on a project. And just today, I'm working about all of the trash issues in the dumpsters at the Dollar General stores. So I've been working with the district manager, also working with Officer McLaughlin because there's some homeless camps behind there. We've developed a, well, a solution that we're going to try and see if it works and then implement it to more Dollar Generals and then possibly add that to the planning commission. But I've been working with, I contacted Holly over in code enforcement. So it involves the community resource officers, the store owners, and also the different code enforcement city workers. So just trying to collaborate to come up with solutions and implement those solutions. And if they work, then, you know, utilize them for all of the existing stores to clean up and improve our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony, you're next. Same question. If I need to repeat, please say.
Sorry, I'm muted. If you could repeat it really quickly, please.
Yes, as a city council member, which individuals or groups would you rely on to provide advice regarding such things as zoning changes, code enforcement, and priorities for city funds?
Right.
Go ahead.
Yes, so to me, it's important that everybody gets equal representation. So everybody in District 1, whether they vote, they don't vote, they vote for me, they vote against me, they campaign for somebody else, they donate to somebody else. Everybody gets represented equally in my mind. So whenever seeking advice, you know, in terms of the values of the community, it's important to listen to those traditional groups, organizations like CSL, like the Chamber. But it's also important to listen to groups that don't really have a voice right now. So groups like the Hispanic community, the Black community, the LGBT community. All of them deserve to hear, to have their voices heard as well. I think that question also includes not just the values that our community has, you know, in terms of the direction that we want our city to go in, but in terms of technical questions or technical information. So coding or code enforcement zoning laws. To me, I think it's important to listen to the experts we have on city staff. I think it's important to build our own expertise. So I have several books. Out of View, my bookshelf here has several books on those sort of issues, homelessness, zoning issues, city development. So becoming an expert and asking for expert advice on technical issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, you've got to listen to all stakeholders. And whoever, whatever the topic is, it's the duty of a city council member to listen and do the due diligence and research to how it's going to impact the citizens of that area and to make sure that whatever the topic is falls in line with the strategic plan of the city council and of the city. You know, every year, the council does a retreat to develop the strategic plan to make sure that every decision, large and small, follows what is best for the whole community. So you've got to talk to the surrounding community, surrounding neighbors, and also the department heads to make sure that a council member is making the best decision for whether it's police, fire, water pollution, water department, or power. There are so many different departments or whatever the topic is that you've got to keep in mind all stakeholders.
Absolutely. Okay, so Colleen, we're up on question three here. And there's threes in the threes. What are the three independent city public services that serve the residents well? And what are the three city public services with which you have concerns?
Well, I feel like the street department is doing an excellent job with all this snow that we've had lately. I feel like the, like the police officers, the community resource officers, I feel like they're doing a great job. I mean, community development, there's, I mean, we have a lot of good departments. So I, I mean, I'm pretty pleased with all of the interactions I've had with them, you know, the different departments. I'm disappointed in our city council. I've, you know, experienced a couple of times where I've been berated at the council meetings, which was really surprising to me. So I feel like as far as the different departments within the city, I feel like I could work with all of those departments. And as far as the decorum with the council, we've got some work to do in that department. So I'll just leave with that.
Right, thank you. Matt, how about you? Three that are doing well, three that maybe could improve?
Sure, I'll do three that could improve. Definitely tourism. We have, I believe, a department of one currently. So we have such a strong, deep history that I feel like the rest of the state and country could benefit from knowing more about our history. The accounting department could be improved upon. Last year, we had the issue with IPL and tracking. And since then, it's been resolved, but we're, what, less than 30 days of having a new time program, timing in. And then IPL, there's a lot to be had with IPL. I don't, I don't want to feel, I don't want to say that they're doing anything bad, but the next six months, there's going to be a lot to review with how we should handle a new power plant. And so like I said, there's nothing, I'm not speaking negative of IPL. It's just there's a lot of attention that needs to be given. The good, I believe, our police station, our police department, and our fire department are on their way up. They've done a lot of improvements within the last 60 days.
Thank you. Tony, the goods and the bads, three each, if you can.
All right, well, I think that our city employees do a really good job. So it's really tough to say, you know, say these people are doing well, these people are not. But I do have a couple. And I think it really, it's important to note that it's more a reflection of our leadership and the resources they provide. The fire department is doing a good job, I think. Especially what I've heard positive comments about is that they have really good mental health services for firefighters. You know, it's a really, it can be a very traumatizing job, obviously. And this is something I heard that we do better than anybody else is mental health for our firefighters. I've heard good things about parks, especially this last year. As part of the Sustainability Commission, we pick up trash a lot. And we've noticed that the parks are very clean. And this might be a surprising one, but HR, Matt mentioned the timekeeping issue. Yes, that was kind of a rough start with that. But I was extremely impressed when I met with our new HR director, Jamie Reinsmeyer. Really quick, I think people have issues with the quality of our streets. People have problems with IPL and our higher rates. And people have an issue with code enforcement, that sort of thing. But again, it's not the people at the city. It's, in my opinion, the city leadership giving them what they need. Thank you.
Thanks. So Tony, we're going to stay with you. And this is kind of related. And these are great questions from the, that were submitted to us. What is the one idea of yours that could save the city of Independence significant money?
Oh my gosh, I wish there was one idea, but I don't think, I mean, I don't want to be rude, but I believe that is sort of the thinking that kind of has sunk us a little bit, is this idea that there's the one thing that can save us. The one, the next big idea is the one that will save us. But I think the key to becoming fiscally stable over the long term is simply making it a priority in every single decision we make. Going back to the new HR director, Jamie Reinsmeyer, when she made a presentation at the city council meeting about Dayforce, which is the thing that, part of it is the new timekeeping. She didn't really present anything about Dayforce itself. What she did is that she calculated the financial numbers. She said, here's how much we're spending. Here's how much we're going to be saving from this. And that's what she presented to the city council. And, you know, if I do get elected, I'm going to print out that presentation and I'm going to show it to the city manager. And I'm going to say, this is what I want anytime you ask us to do anything. Here is decision A and the finances behind that, the costs, long-term, short-term. Here's choice B, the cost, short-term, long-term. Choice C, cost, short-term, long-term. And so we can see the financial impact of our decisions. And we can then, when we make this every single decision with finances in mind, that will slowly but surely build us to financial stability. And I am out of time. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Matt, how about your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think being a small business owner, it's not easy. But when you're spending other people's money, which that's what a form of government is doing, it's monopoly of money, sometimes to politicians, that they don't realize how hard it is to earn a buck. And when they're making decisions to tear down a closed power plant and choosing the more expensive, the most expensive bid to decompose or destruct a power plant that hadn't, we didn't even need to spend a single dollar on. It's basically, we've got to start running this city like it's our own business. And every dollar does count. Doesn't matter if it's buying a police car or tearing down an old power plant, anything in between. It's make financially conservative decisions because we have a billion-dollar deficit for infrastructure that Zach brings up or has brought up, the city manager has brought up the last couple of years and is addressed to the city. So, yeah, we've got to make better financial decisions and which sounds easy, but it is very hard because every department has their needs and we need to support every department.
Thanks, Matt. Colleen, a big idea to save money?
Well, what I would have to say is I feel like that our city government needs to be more fiscally responsible. And I think the decisions that, some of the decisions that they are making are not in the best interest of our city. And I just think, before we make decisions for major purchases, especially at the council meetings, when we have so many people that are familiar with the issue, that take the time to do the research and come to share their concerns. And, you know, we see this over and over and over again. And the city leaders just still proceed with making those decisions despite a lot of times, these are things that the people do not want. And we don't see a financial benefit because of the TIPS for years to come. And so just being more fiscally responsible and just allowing the community to be a part, you know, to be at the table to make those decisions. And I think really addressing the homelessness with, you know, law and order, partnering with community resources. Addressing that is going to allow new families to come into the neighborhood, which will generate more revenue. So those are my ideas.
Thank you. And so the way this random order works, it seems like we continue to start with the person that last spoke. So Colleen, you're up. I heard it said IPL earlier and I realized that's Independence Power and Light. So this question is for you. Independence Power and Light is a municipal electric company managed by the mayor and elected officials. How much money will the rate restoration generate and what will it be used for?
Well, it kind of goes back to like trying to draw new businesses and new families to Independence to generate more power usage to, you know, to generate more revenue. So it's all just interconnected. And so I think if we solve some of the blight and trash issues and really find meaningful solutions to the homelessness problem that we have here in Independence, we can get new families and new businesses to come to Independence. So of course, that's going to benefit IPL because there'll be more energy users. So that's, that's my perspective. Everything is kind of interconnected there.
Okay, Tony, what do you think?
So at the last forum, we had Chamber of Commerce. I talked a little bit about wanting to not sell IPL and wanting to move to a public utility board model. So in this brief time, I kind of want to talk a little bit about why I don't think selling it is the right way and why I'm not entirely convinced by the arguments. Part of the problem, I feel, the big argument is the customer mix, that we have an extremely high number of residential customers compared to commercial and industrial. And with East Gate, North Point, that will hopefully move that in the right direction a little bit. But at the end of the day, that's not a part of the utility. It's a part of who we are as a city. And so in my mind, when we go to somebody to sell IPL, how can we go to them and say, hey, look, we have this thing. We're struggling for it to make money because we just don't have the right customer mix. And then they come and say, okay, yes, we believe we can buy this. We can lower rates, which is the whole purpose of selling it, and we will be able to make money where you couldn't. To me, the only way you can do that is if it's run better. And I still believe that we can run it better ourselves. And I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, what do you think?
Can you ask that question again?
Absolutely. Independence Power and Light is a municipal electric company managed by the mayor and elected officials. How much money will the rate restoration generate and what will it be used for?
I'm not quite understanding that question. I know there was the rate restoration a while back that it decreased our payments and then it got adjusted to increase again. But, so I'm not quite understanding the exact meaning or detail of the question.
Well, these were submitted by the public, but I guess it's your view on the role of IPL in the community and how it becomes a viable.
Yeah, thank you. That's what I was, that's kind of how I was going to answer it.
Sure.
Kind of along with what Mr. Summers was mentioning with, there's, there's too much false information, or I guess, let me take that back, take that comment back. Uninformation. There's a study that's out that we should be getting back in June that is going to give us the knowledge on whether or not we should keep or sell IPL. And to keep, how much it would cost to build a new power plant, to sell, how much it would save or cost the ratepayers. So it's, anything to do with IPL is such a loaded question with the information we have today. We have it in our charter that we're supposed to have a power plant. We also have a permit slash license to manufacture power that is, that's not a license that you get easily. So we have to preserve that permit, but also make good financial decisions for the future generations of independents. So the information's just not out there with the knowledge. So until June, until we can properly digest the report, there's not, there's not a good answer, in my opinion, right now at this time.
Thanks, Matt. And again, keeping with how this seems to be running, you're up for the next question. And it's been mentioned a couple of times tonight, and I just dug through the questions to find it again. What resources and procedures would you recommend for decreasing the homeless problem?
Sure. So the CSL is, I think, one of our most important resources we have in Independence to help with homelessness. We have the Independence Together crew that are cleaning the streets, which we're seeing a direct improvement to the community. While as a payer into my taxes, it is paying for the streets to be clean, so to pay those workers. And then we also have, we're hoping in the third quarter this year, there will be a drop-in center that the CSL is raising money for at the Good Shepherd Community of Christ Center. That will give opportunity for homeless people to have showers, laundry, bathrooms, a mail service. Um that will give opportunity for homeless people to have showers, laundry, bathrooms, a mail service. So um a mail service is is huge for homeless people to uh for their healthcare, their benefits, case management. Um our fire department has also created a program, um the ARCH program, which is uh it stands for Alternative Response to Community Health. Um that the police department uses that resource to address um some of their calls. So homelessness is i- is a very deep, deep, deep issue that nationwide, uh it's plaguing the country nationwide. And there's not one answer um to fix it. There's not one reason why somebody is homeless. So it we need to look at opportunities to help people not become homeless or get out of homelessness.
Thanks. Tony?
Homelessness is obviously a really big uh problem. And that's why, as I was preparing to run for office, I put together a plan to end homelessness and I'm the only candidate in district one with a plan to end homelessness. And that has to be the standard, ending homelessness. Not just dealing with homelessness, homelessness, not just making it a little bit better, not moving from point A to point B, but ending homelessness. Um I have a plan on my website that's a little bit too long to describe in a minute and a half. But the foundation is two ideas that are really so obvious that I kind of feel a little silly having to say them out loud. The first is that the only solution to homelessness are the only solution to the homelessness problem is a solution to homelessness. And secondly, the only solution to homelessness is for homeless people to not be homeless anymore. Yet our pro- our policies don't, policies don't really reflect that. Um and the research on this is very clear. The uh if you ever read any article, any book on homelessness, they all say the same answer, which is a lack of housing. Um so a common analogy real quick is musical chairs. That when you play a game of musical chairs, you have 12 people, 11 chairs, somebody ends up without a chair. Now, if there's a person on crutches and a wheelchair, you know, crutches, broken leg, can barely walk, they're probably going to end up without a chair. But was it, so you could say those are the causes of them, but not having a chair. But the fundamental problem was that there wasn't enough chairs for everybody. In the same way, not enough housing for everybody. Thank you.
Colleen?
So before you can say you're going to end homelessness, I think you have to have the actual experience of working with homeless people. And I've been doing that for two decades and really it is a multi-pronged uh issue. There are those that are suffering with mental disorders that really need to get uh that mental health treatment. There's those that are struggling with addiction. And again, they need to get treatment for addiction. And then there are those, a lot of those that just want to be on the streets, that don't want to get any type of help and they want to live on the streets. And with that situation, I mean, we're just going to have to enforce the laws that are already in the books and you know, uh I had a situation where I went into the post office to check my lockbox last Friday. And there was a homeless guy laying in the post office floor and I went and asked the workers if they knew he was there and they were like, yeah, but they didn't really know what to do to help him. So I contacted Officer McLaughlin and uh he got ahold of uh Barbie, who got ahold of uh uh a transitional housing uh I'm Hope Faith Ministries and got him in. He wanted help. And so that's how we have to look at it. It's just take each case uh individually and find the right solution.
We'll have to cut you off there. Oddly enough, you get the next question. And so along the lines of housing, rehabbers are taking over the older neighborhoods, performing superficial improvements, raising prices threefold. And Independence established a quote homestead tax freeze to protect older, long time residents from being taxed out of their homes. Is Colleen, that's for you.
Okay, I'm I I'm sorry. Can you just repeat the last part of that question? For some reason, I couldn't hear you as clearly towards the end.
Absolutely. Can Independence establish a homestead tax freeze to protect older, long-term residents from being taxed out of their homes? This all comes of the on the basis of of people flipping houses and raising the values.
Well, I uh I'm not sure if I'm super clear on what you're asking, but I do know that with this latest property tax increase, the city did file a lawsuit against that because the increases were just outrageous. And I know there was a resolution that was submitted for you know, seniors that their property taxes would not be increased. So I'm totally in support of that. I mean, especially with the erratic housing market and prices are really inflated. And so I definitely want to protect our senior citizens and make sure that their taxes are not raised so high that you know, on their fixed incomes that they can't afford to keep their homes. So I definitely am on board for solutions and you know, just protections for them.
I think I think part of this is the 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 term gentrification, meaning that people are seeing good low value houses, low cost houses and trying to make a real estate score off of that. So um yeah, okay. So uh Matt, what do you think about this topic?
Um yeah, so well, just the the tax freeze, the way I understand it is if you're uh once you reach the age of uh receiving social security, you get a freeze on your tax rate, which I think is great. Um you know, people pay in their whole life in personal property tax and uh social security doesn't ever continually go up at the same rate of cost of living. So I I support that. But then I I also believe that the question that is being asked is, like you said, the gentrification of um outside investors purchasing uh rental property and uh not investing to make the establishment a better place to live for the renters. And you know, I own some rental property and uh I do the rental ready program. And I think it it's it's an okay program. It could be improved. Um there are there are extremely basic things that are are a part of that rental ready program that ha- uh home has to be inspected every two years. Um but yeah, uh outside investors to uh to basically uh state, they they don't give the attention to the home or the renter as much as one should if it was a local owner, but it's hard to uh to police that. And also, you know, it's a free country and free state. So as long as the owner is invested in the home.
Thanks. Uh Tony, what do you think?
Um just a quick point of clarification. I believe that law that the question mentioned is a state law, not a local law. Uh it doesn't really matter, but just to clarify, um during COVID, a lot of uh out of state, big real estate investors kind of swept in and took over the city. And so this has been kind of a recent, really big problem that we've been facing. Um there's sort of been an attempt um to so a problem with it is that we don't really know who owns everything, which is surprising. Because these LLCs will change names, sell it to one to another. And so we don't know who owns it, who, so it's hard to go after them. Um so there's an attempt to, whenever a renter signs up for a utility service, to require them to list who actually owns the home. Um this has kind of been frustratingly delayed. Like I first heard about it back, I think in like September or or October. And we still haven't passed it. And this is a great idea, something we really need to do. Um in terms of um uh housing, I'm not, gentrification, I don't really know because, you know, at the end of the day, we want our neighborhood to be nicer. And when you make a neighborhood nicer, prices go up. Um I think a a solution can be a wider diversity of housing and a good wa- a good plan that's in the works now, I don't have time to explain, is the uh Inglewood Overlay District that will increase the diversity of housing available to people to own.
All right. Thank you. Uh so sticking with you, Tony. This was made a little headlines a while back. Uh Independence School District has a four-day school week. Should it be continued? Or should the district return to a five-day schedule and why? And as a add-on, have you been personally affected by the change?
So that's an interesting question because it's not really a city council related question. It's more of a school district related question and there's also going to be school district elections uh coming up in the same April election. So make sure to pay attention to those. Um specifically, I have not been affected. I have friends who have kids in the school district. And from what I've heard, it's it's obviously very tough on them. Uh one friend in particular is a s- a single mom. She has to have her mom watch her kids every Monday. And I have no idea what she would do if her mom wasn't available. It makes it, I would obviously strongly prefer a five-day school week because it makes it so with a four-day school week, it's harder to draw in families and make Independence a really desirable place for families. That if you have to find childcare every Monday, I mean, why would you choose to live here instead of a Blue Springs or a Lee Summit where you can just, you know, they have a school every day? But I would say a big problem is not even with the school district. It it is with the city that at the end of the day, it comes down to funding. The reason they did this is because they couldn't pay enough to attract teachers. And their funding comes from real estate taxes and the city policies just ultimately impact how the city is developed and how much real estate taxes the uh school district is able to collect. Thank you.
Matt, for you?
Yeah, so I've talked to Dr. Hurl um and the administration and some of the school board uh members. From from their stance, it appears that it's working very well. Um in the higher, the high schools, there are um college courses that kids can take to launch them forward into their college um or professional careers. So on that level, I think that's a really great thing. I I can only think of graduating high school with an associate's degree would be uh and great and greatly improve my uh financial impact as you're getting older. You're starting to make money so much sooner. From the parents' point of view, um I've, it's, I believe fifty fifty. I haven't actually kept a tally. I've talked to some parents. Some parents love it, some parents hate it. So with that being said, I think I I just read last week that uh is it uh Anthony Rizzo uh that is wanting to put it before um the state to make it a law that it has to be presented to the citizens for them to take a vote before a school district can make a four-day week. I I'm not against that. I think ultimately, when it comes to these bigger decisions, it should be left up to the people. Um because they're the ones that are going to be impacted. So my opinion, I have not been impacted. My kid goes to Fordo Sage. Um so I I don't have a stance other than talking to the administration and the citizens. So.
Colleen, what do you think?
So I have also talked to Dr. Hurl, some of the staff as well as parents and I just had a visit, one of my uh families I work with. I actually see them on Mondays now because of the four-day school week. And you know, I was talking to uh the older boy, which he's fourteen, he's making straight A's. He loves having the four-day school week. And so I just think um you know, I think you're gonna probably hear both sides, but I mean, I've had real positive feedback about it. So and it does, you know, save the school in the district a lot of money with not, you know, running utilities and the buses and just, just, I guess, the different ways that they could save money by only utilizing the school four days a week. I think, I think really just there being so much competition to get good teachers, they had to think out of the box. And so that's what they came up with. And I mean, as far as I can tell, I mean, it seems to be working. So I guess if if there's enough protest about it, I guess they could take it to the ballot. But I think they need to make the decisions that they feel is working best. So thank you.
Thanks. Uh Tony, we're going to come back to you. Um a uh a front page article in the Casey Star on Sunday found that the Independence Police pursue lawbreakers with high-speed chase more than any other area police, leading to the death of innocent bystanders. What changes need to be enacted?
That's a really interesting question. And you know, it's not one that many people ask of me. So um I would say, you know, you you can see both sides of it, that they are extremely dangerous, obviously. Um but you don't want criminals to just feel like they can uh get away as long as they speed away. Um I would say that making sure that whenever they, whenever police do pursue a criminal, that they do it in a way that is as safe as possible, if if you know, that's even reasonable at all. Um perhaps using something like more um helicopters to who obviously won't cause the same uh accidents uh that are predictive of where the uh criminals will go. But um yeah, this is an important issue, obviously, and we need to have policies that keep the citizens safe. Thank you.
Thanks. Colleen, a sensitive issue for some of the public. What do you think?
Did you say that happened in Independence or are you talking about uh another state?
Nope. Here in Independence, front page article in the Star on Sunday found Independence Police are
And and those statistics have been checked out?
This is a question that someone posed based on the article in the Star last Sunday.
Okay, so uh whatever you say is Independence, are officers during high-speed chases have had more incidents with pedestrians? Is that what you said?
Uh leading to the deaths of innocent bystanders.
Okay. Yeah. So um I would, I'm I'm gonna have to go back and look at that article. I did not see that, but I mean, I, the only way to solve that is just to be more careful during the per- pursuit, which uh I can't imagine they're not focusing. I mean, I know it's a high-speed chase, so their primary focus is uh the perpetrator and catching them. But you know, you've got to be aware of everything around you. So I mean, I guess uh better training, maybe uh maybe there's a different type of camera that will alert them if if there is a pedestrian or somebody in close proximity and just uh making that extra effort with training and you know, I guess uh maybe consequences or or um I would just have to know a little bit more details and I'd have to look at that article myself and check out those facts. So.
Hey, thanks. Uh Matt, what do you think?
Yeah, I read that article. Uh we've, Independence has been getting a lot of pressure because we do pursue. Um it it I I don't like to think of a world where criminals think that they can hit a hundred miles an hour and they're going to get away with it because they know that Independence Police officers are not going to chase. Um there there is the tag system that we have deployed on. Um I don't know the exact number of vehicles. It's not all of them where there's a a sticky uh tag that they can shoot and it attaches to a bumper. And then the officers uh retreat and they can track them. Um yeah, it would be great if we had the funding for a helicopter. But it as long as it's not a petty crime and it's, you know, child abduction, a shooting, a a high um risk or uh the severity of that criminal running away and causing harm to another person. I feel that it's, it is our duty is or I believe it is the duty of the officers to try to apprehend that criminal. Um it it, we don't the officers are not going in to chase a criminal with the hopes that somebody's going to get hurt, a innocent bystander. But if that criminal gets away that might have shot somebody at at a restaurant or a a business, I think it's the right of the officers to try to apprehend that criminal so they don't hurt somebody else. And anyways, my time's up.
All right. Well, thanks. Um Colleen, over to you on this one. Uh shift in topics. Uh this person says there are ongoing concerns about climate change. We have lost many trees due to weather events, old age and diseases. At the same time, our city is getting hotter due to so many concrete roads and parking lots. What would you do about this?
Well, I just uh kind of wanted to address that last question. I was just thinking that maybe the reason why Independence has um more of an opportunity The reason why Independence has um more of an opportunity.
Let's uh let's you, let's use that in your.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, maybe it's because we have more people on our streets, but as far as climate change, I mean. I ju- I honestly, I believe that the the climate is, you know, it. It is pretty much the same. I am not a a true proponent for. You know, climate change. I think we need, I think we uh. Here in the United States, here in our uh state, I think we do use clean energy and we do. You know, try to make good choices, but I think that uh it's a global issue, so if. Other countries that uh do not have the standards that we have as far as. You know, the just um the resources and um. The different types of energy, like the solar energy and just uh the different. Uh things that we do to try to keep our environment clean. It's gonna be kind of hopeless.
Okay, um let's see here. Uh Matt?
Oh, boy, climate change. That's a tough one. Uh I believe everybody needs to do their part to. Protect Mother Nature. Um we, it it's a. I was just reading an article this past summer about. The humidity and why humidity has grown gone up across the whole Midwest and that's because of corn uh production. Is is at a higher rate than it's ever been because corn is in fuel and plastics and. Fabric and it's in everything and the moisture of the kernels is causing. Which is um affecting our atmosphere. So I'm not a scientist. I I just know that we need to take care of uh pollution and uh do what uh do what we can to not pollute. Earth, so.
This this person uh kind of brought it to city level by saying trees, roads, parking lots. So anything on that?
Um yeah, I mean, uh anytime we can plant trees uh to create more oxygen and. Aesthetically, it's uh appearance is nicer um. No, we we need more greenery around the square and uh. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what that person's exactly wanting to know.
Yep, public questions uh that that they want to know. Uh uh Tony, what do you think?
Oh, man, I'm so excited for this question. I finally get to use my physics degree. So uh when I was in college, I took an environmental physics class and it was a very interesting class, but it was also a very scary class. Um so, yeah, a minute and a half has not been nearly long enough to talk about it. In terms of preventing climate change, I think everybody's well aware what has to be done there. Um. Obviously, at the city level, we can't do it by ourselves, but we can um use more renewable energy sources, solar, wind. Um but it's not just enough to build them. You have to also take into account that unlike fossil fuel sources. You can't just turn them on and off. Solar power, solar panels only work during the day. Uh wind farms only work when the wind is blowing. So s- energy storage is a very big issue when you're talking about renewable energy. In terms of local effects, that from the research I've seen, uh in Kansas City, we're kind of just on the edge of. The Great Lakes area is really the area that has, is gonna see the least harm from it. Um so we're kind of on the edge of that. Um but it's still something you're talking about parking lots. That's obviously a big thing. When you have these huge asphalt surfaces. On a hot day, they make it feel so much hotter. Trees, the other direction, they provide so much shade. Um and so when you're outside, I I should go without saying, standing on a parking lot is so much har- hotter. Than sitting in a shade of trees. So more trees, less parking lots, and I'm out of time. Thank you.
All right. Matt, uh to the hot topic of the year, maybe. AI. Artificial intelligence is getting a lot of press at the moment. How might AI be used to improve systems operations citywide? How's that for science fiction?
Yeah, I went to the uh, two months ago, the Chamber of Commerce of Kansas City had a speaker um on. Where AI is currently and where it will be and it it is mind boggling. It's uh, it's more than I could even comprehend. I do think there's a value to it. Um I am probably a uh very cautionary. Individual when it comes to AI. I see its value, but I also see its uh deception and uh. Sometimes the easy way is not always the right way. Um can it help us in our. Community and city management? Yeah, it probably could make the, make more things more efficient that. Over the next four to eight years that uh it's gonna have to be looked at um. But uh it, yeah, that's a, that's a great question, um because it's, AI is affecting programmers. Um medical fields, um e- every industry. It AI is going to be affecting that industry within the next, uh next year to two years. And so, we've got to always um do our research and uh have the knowledge to make decisions based on it. So that's a great question, whoever submitted it.
Yes, it's certainly intriguing. Colleen, your uh your thoughts?
Yeah, so um interestingly, I'm on the storm oversight committee and actually, Independence. Is going to start using AI to try to project like what trees. Need to be trimmed prior to ice storms, so. I think they're already looking at some of the ways that AI can benefit our city. But again, I think we need to be careful with it. I mean, I know it's a, I honestly, it it. It is mind boggling and uh I'm really impressed, but I'm a little nervous at the same time, but I think. Um you know, as as our leaders probe into it, they're gonna certainly see. Where they feel like it's necessary to use that type of of technology and then if it works, I mean, it's great, but. I just hate to think that it would like replace jobs, you know, replace people and replace jobs, so. But I'm um, I mean, you just gotta kind of uh think progressively and just uh utilize it where. It's gonna benefit and, you know, maybe with the ice storms, it might prevent injuries for humans, so. That might be an advantage, so.
Thanks. Uh Tony, uh AI?
Another question where I happen to have expertise as a software engineer, although um. In this case, I haven't researched it particularly deeply. Um it's just not an area that I've been involved with, but. Um I would be cautious about relying on it too much. That, you know, it can, it's honestly quite, it's unbelievable. It really is what they can do. But at the end of the day, computers and human beings process information in fundamentally different ways. And so what an AI, what a computer can do is just. Still not even close to what a human can do. If you've seen the AI artwork. It's really hard for the computer to do that because. Like it can kind of understand what a human generally looks like, but it doesn't understand that a human. Only has five fingers. These artworks always have six fingers. They have no thumbs. They have all these issues. And so it's these little details that can often get wrong if you're not careful, if you just use it without really thinking about it. That, yes, it can kind of help you, you know, you say. Produce this sort of information for me automatically and it can do that. But you have to make sure that the information is actually correct and actually correct at the detailed level. So it's a very exciting technology, but we just have to be very cautious about depending on it too much.
Thanks. Uh Tony, we're gonna stick with you and do a really huge shift here. Uh again, a question from the, from the public. Have you had any discussion with parents of transgender children, children? Or doctors who treat transgender children to hear the impact proposed legislation would have on them or their family? If so, what have you found in these discussions? If not, why?
I have not, and that's honestly something that I feel like is a legitimate deficit of mine, is that I have not talked. Too many trans people or parents of trans children. Um but I have done a little bit of work to try and understand the issues a little bit more. Um obviously, I am not trans, so there's a limit to how much I can really understand what it's like to be trans. Um I can imagine how difficult it can be um. How much just hatred and vitriol they receive. And whenever you're a chi- a child, it can be so much more difficult um. And I think there are legitimate questions about uh the actual transition process itself. Again, I'm not an expert on this, um but my understanding is that. Uh in terms of children, puberty blockers are the way to go because it's reversible um. Honestly, adults can do whatever they want. Um I I have heard stories. Of parents with trans children who have really suffered because. They're forced to play, like for example, play sports with um. Other children of the opposite sex of their uh. Uh psychological gender instead of their uh more uh sex-related gender, so. I wish I could give a better answer in that scenario where I do want to talk to more people who are trans and fans of trans people.
Matt, your thoughts?
Um yeah, um I I do support the organization in Inglewood of the West Indy Connection. Um I, during my uh my role as the chairman of the Board of the Independent Chamber of Commerce. We developed a DEI, Diversity Equity and Inclusion uh Committee. And uh we uh started building relationships with. Um the LGBTQ uh Chamber of Commerce of Kansas City. And uh we, like I said, it was something that was created during my term and. Uh it's it's continuing through um the chamber to make sure within the business community that all are included. Uh and so that's basically the extent of it. Um I I do feel as far as transgender. That it should be something that is uh when you're an adult and not a minor. Um but uh as far as. Anything more in depth than that, I don't know what uh what that quish- question is pertaining to other than um. That's that's all I have to say about that, I guess.
Sure. Uh Colleen?
So I have, because I work with families and I have for a very long time, I have worked with families with children that are trans and. I just believe that this is an issue that primarily needs to be worked out within the family. I'm concerned that the schools are promoting and trying to indoctrinate kids through literature and. Posters and different things and, I mean, as a, as a child in uh family development major. Um I know the prefrontal cortex of the brain is not fully realized until in the early twenties and so. As far as like any surgeries on minors, I definitely don't, you know, don't wanna see that just because. I'm afraid that these minors, they're not, I mean, well, first of all, they're not mature enough to make those decisions. And I just don't want it to be something that they're gonna regret and. I am familiar with the Wink uh organization and the only thing I didn't approve of is. Just that they uh call it a safe place for, like if you, if your family rejects you, you know, there's a safe place and. You know, fourteen years old and and just the selling of some of the material. I've seen. The covers of some of those books and they're, wow, they're pretty explicit, but. I just think really the family needs to work together with counseling and whatever. They feel they need to do just to stay a cohesive family unit.
Okay, um I'm gonna, gonna go to one of the questions that uh somebody mentioned and I think is a good one. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with you, Colleen. What's the one question you wish I'd asked and how would you answer it?
There it is, uh kind of put me on the spot there um. I guess my uh probably the question just kind of goes back to the love of the city and. How would you help Independence become a prosperous city again?
Let me, let me jump in here and say you, we'll have two minutes for closing remarks, so this is just to let you know that.
Okay, so your, if if I could have you ask me a question. It would be uh how can we get Independence uh prospering again?
And how would you answer it?
And so how I would answer that would be again to, um instead of just focusing so much like on the square or Inglewood. To focus more on the communities and rebuild the infrastructure. A lot of the neighborhoods, especially in my district, they have. Is some, most of them don't even have sidewalks, or the sidewalks they have are crumbling. There's. Uh just vacant houses. There's so much blight all over. So I think if we can clean up our neighborhoods, we can really attract new families and more families and. Really just uh maybe uh have new gateways to the entrance of District One and just. Really turn the stigma around and turn Independence, it's a really special place. There's. So much historic value and I love the horse and buggy and the square and. I just think we need to hone in on the neighborhoods and just. Make the neighborhoods and the community just a place where we can all be proud of.
Thanks. Um Matt, uh what's that question I should have asked you and you'd love to answer?
Um I'd love for you to ask me uh what uh how can, what is the success of our city? How can we get there? Um uh right off the bat, um the geo bond. Now I think the geo bond is going to impact our community in the right direction. It it hits on streets. Sidewalks, curbs, historical sites, police. Um a community, possible community center. Um I I think that's. That's gonna be a big game changer for our community. Um it's gonna be a generational decision. Um that is, has the potential to. Bring other uh businesses and citizens or residents to our community to uh. To further that, uh you know, earlier I said we have that billion dollar deficit for infrastructure. We've got to find that money somewhere. How can we find it? Well, we've got to attract, we've got to be attractive enough for. Residential people to move here, to build more homes, more businesses and more commercial and industrial. And so we've got the North Point Project, that's a huge, huge impact to our community. Uh it it will, that will be a generational impact in its own right, once it's completed. But if if you think about that geo bond and how that can move the needle for Independence to be successful, that is huge.
Thanks. Uh Tony, what do you think? Best question I could have asked.
Yeah, this is a difficult one. I'm glad I went last. Um. One question I really like at political debates, political discussions is to say something positive about your opponents. Because it's always, it can be a very negative experience. Um so for Col- Colleen, um I think. A lot of people view her very negatively, but I think that. She can be a very positive force in that she she brings a lot of energy and I think you saw especially. With that question.
What did you say? Are you talking about?
So, hold on, hold on, hold on. So she can be very, and her answer with the school district was a very good one. She clearly did.
Talk about me?
But um sometimes, you know, she just kind of lets a little, some other people influence her a little bit too much, like. No, she sometimes gets a little bit of a Tucker Carlson.
Let's hang on to. What is the question I I should have asked? And.
Used all his time, so that's on him. That's his loss. Your time's over, Ben.
You can see for the negative side, when she kind of.
We have, we have closing remarks coming up. You each get two minutes. I'm gonna go ahead and cut it off there.
Okay.
All right. Um so, uh let's see, who's first? Who wants to be first in closing remarks? Matt?
Oh, boy.
How democratic was that? All right.
Yeah, okay. Um like I said in my opening statement, uh I, I was influenced by true leaders. Um by my Uncle Hank and my Grandpa Bill. And that's what I feel like our community is lacking, is true leadership. My district has two school districts, Fordo Sage and. My district has two school districts, Fortosage and Independent Schools. I have residential, commercial and industrial. And we need a leader to represent them. We need a leader to make it more attractive in that district. Um, improving our community only, it takes more than just being voted in as a city council member. You've got to listen. You've got to do your research and learn, but you also have to inspire, involve and include others to improve the community. So I feel like I have the amb- ambition, the energy and communication skills and the ability to. Make my community better by being a leader and a role model for my community. So, that's all.
Alright, um, Colleen, would you like to be last or next?
I'll go last, thank you.
Tony?
Alright, no problem. So before the AFC Championship game on Sunday, Mahomes asked his teammates, how much do you want it? Usually, city council meetings don't have hype up speeches, but this is what we should be asking ourselves every day. How much do we want a great city? Not just good, not just acceptable, great. During the course of this campaign, I've learned a lot, but one thing I've come to realize is that how you campaign reflects how you'll govern. In my campaign, I've brought intensity and hard work that will be reflected in my time on the city council. Because I badly want my hometown to be a great city. During the campaign, this intensity is aimed at a singular goal, winning the election. When I'm in office, that intensity will be aimed at a different singular goal, making Independence great. But greatness won't just happen. It requires leaders who want it and want it with a burning intensity. That burning intensity has kept me warm and dry while I was out in the cold and rain knocking on two thousand doors. I didn't do it because I love spending all my free time in the cold trudging through snow. I did it because I have a vision of an independence that people are jealous of, not a city that people scoff at like they do now. But one where they envy those of us who get to live here. A vision of an independence that once existed but has slowly crumbled away due to bad decision making and backdoor dealing. That greatness is a picture I can see so clearly in my mind's eye, one I know won't come to exist if I fail to win. And the same good old boys club continues to run the city like they have for decades. If you also want greatness for Independence, there is only one choice in District One. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Colleen, wrap it up.
Okay, well, I just want to say that uh, right now, I feel like our district, my district, District One. And our city is pretty much at a crossroads, and I do feel like we need leaders with. Proven track records of successes, and I um, have ran my company for two decades. Now started a nonprofit. I um, just believe that instead of somebody who. Has a lot of head knowledge and book knowledge, you need people with actual firsthand experience. And then the other incumbent, um, you know, he's part of the establishment and so. What I hope to bring is just fresh ideas to clean up District One, to get rid of the blight. To address the homeless and the trash situation and just really try to improve my community. I've got a lot invested in Independence and, you know, I just feel like one of my greatest assets. Is my ability to work with people and just come up with solutions. And so, um, again, I just feel like we need strong leaders. That have firsthand experience, that are hard workers, and that's me. And the last thing I wanted to address is just the hit piece that uh, Tony did on me. And I just wanted to say that was over two years ago and taken out of context. And since then, I've met with President McKee and Shirley Murdoch, Dr. Shirley Murdoch, who is in the Community of Christ Church. She's one of my mentors. I meet with her every week, and so I just want to address that and. I just appreciate your vote on February sixth. I feel like I'm the right candidate at this juncture for Independence.
Really want to thank you guys for a great discussion tonight. Um, you know, you, you talked about live events. Um, I do think we get a very good. Uh, discussion going on, even online, and I appreciate you guys taking the time and, and putting the effort into doing this. Thanks very much. Anitra?
Thank you. Good evening, um. Thank you to the folks, the audience members who sent in your thought provoking questions. And your interest in the February sixth Independent City Council Primary Election. And we also want to thank our moderator Sandy Eads. A recording of this forum will be available on the League's website, LWVKC.org. Please take a moment to share our candidate forum via your Facebook page next door. Or other favorite social media channels, and remember, for complete voting and candidate information. Visit the K-LWVKC.org and vote411.org. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you very much.